We now call to order the meeting of the Clarksville Montgomery County Board of Education. If you will, let us all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda this evening is our Point of Pride Awards. And it looks like there are several of those.
Good evening, Board. On this last full day of school, we are excited to celebrate several Points of Pride this evening. We are so proud of the wonderful accomplishments of our students and employees during the 2023-2024 school year. In fact, Jessica and I went back and counted, and we have presented over 500 Points of Pride this school year. And we're excited, we have about 116 tonight. So first, we will honor the valedictorians and salutatorians from each of our eight traditional high schools. Beginning tomorrow and through Saturday, we will celebrate nearly 2,500 seniors graduating from our schools. Tonight, we will pay special recognition to students who have worked diligently to earn the titles of valedictorian and salutator- or salutatorian for their graduating class. I will call up the valedictorian and salutatorian from each high school and ask that their administrative representative join us up front. So in alphabetical order, we'll start with Clarksville High School. And from Clarksville High School, we have valedictorian Ella Smith and salutatorian Ryan Bellamy. From Kenwood High School, valedictorian Angelica Heisey and salutatorian Crystal Labelle. And from our new addition, yes. And from our new addition this year, Kirkwood High School, valedictorian Robert Liel Frost and salutatorian Riley Donovan-Dill Clark. And from Montgomery Central High School, valedictorian Sarah Turpin, salutatorian Drew Yarborough. From Northeast High School, valedictorian Adriana Juana Garcia and salutatorian Mallory Paige Koots. From Northwest High School, valedictorian Kevin Shaw, salutatorian Emma Becker. From Rossview High School, valedictorian Sanvi Burrow, salutatorian Brady Davidson. And from West Creek High School, valedictorian Jean-Yoel Marie Payne and salutatorians, plural, Madison Olivia Bennett and Madison Michelle Claiborne. I know this is a busy time of year, so I appreciate those who could be here. Congratulations to all our valedictorians and salutatorians and to anybody that's out there in the class of 2024. Congratulations. All right. Next, if I could have Ms. Cox and Ms. Ogan, otherwise lovely known as the Kelsey and Chelsea Duo, to please come forward. Last week at a ceremony in Nashville, Moore Magnet was re-designated as a STEAM school by the Tennessee Department of Education and the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network. Each school that received the Tennessee STEM or STEAM school designation underwent a rigorous application process in five focus areas: infrastructure, curriculum and instruction, professional development, achievement, and community and post-secondary partnerships. Once schools have reached five years of implementing and sustaining the designation, they go through the re-designation process. And schools can complete this every five years. Moore was one of 15 schools this year to achieve re-designation and updated their designation from STEM to STEAM to incorporate the arts. Congratulations to the students, faculty, staff, and administrators at Moore Magnet STEAM School. Now, we will celebrate several Montgomery Central High School students who competed in the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America National Conference and earned a top spot. If the Montgomery Central FCC LA students, along with your sponsor and administrator, could please come forward. In this group, we have Austin Mason, who earned gold in job interview level three; Sadie Miles earned gold in entrepreneurship level two; Victoria Gillard and Kaylee Spivey earned silver in interior design level two; and Brooke Mangram earned silver in public policy advocacy level three. Next, we will celebrate students from Montgomery Central High School and Northeast High School who competed in the Future Business Leaders of America State Competition and earned top honors. If the Montgomery Central FBLA students, along with your sponsor and administrator, could please come forward. In this group, we have Noah Davis, who placed first in computer applications; Joseph Reese placed first in database design and applications; Daniel Buddy placed first in spreadsheet applications; Cameron Lord placed second in client service; Joshua Hodges placed second in computer applications; Jackie Bell placed second in database design and applications; Aliana Stenit placed second in word processing; Sidney Batson placed third in agribusiness; Addison Jurecki placed third in spreadsheet applications; Serenity Devian placed third in word processing; Benjamin Bull placed fourth in spreadsheet applications; and Katie French qualified for Nationals in public speaking. All right. And next, if the Northeast High School FBLA students, along with your sponsor and administrator, could please come forward. And we apologize, your names were inadvertently left off of the agenda for this evening, but we are proud to honor you tonight. Gianna Henry placed first in advertising; Kalinda Johnson placed third in public policy and advocacy; Atiana Wick placed second in human resources management; and Jenna Siravsky placed third in web design presentation. And for our final career and technical education honors, if the Montgomery Central HOSA students, along with your sponsor and administrator, could please come forward. Two students from Montgomery Central earned top honors at the Health Occupation Students of America State Leadership Conference. Abigail Chambers placed third in CPR and first aid, and Susan Long placed third in CPR and first aid. And now, we will celebrate three students who earned unique honors in extracurricular international-level competitions. And to my knowledge, these may be the first students in CMCSS to earn these honors. I did find out today that Abigail McKenna and Zane Galassi would not be able to attend. I just want to make sure, last minute, they didn't attend. But we are proud of both of these students who earned some international accolades for their essay contests. Congratulations to them. And now, if Stanford Thompson IV and any coaches or school representatives that are here with him could please come forward. Stanford placed third in the state and earned a spot again this year in the USA Wrestling Junior and 16U National Championships at the Fargo Dome in Fargo, North Dakota, with over 7,000 wrestlers from across the United States and Puerto Rico. Last summer, he competed at the Fargo Dome and finished eighth in the nation in his division. He began wrestling in sixth grade and has numerous accomplishments, including being the first male wrestler from Clarksville to achieve All-American status. Congratulations. We'll all be cheering you on this summer and in your future competitions. All right. And last but not least, we will be celebrating two of our outstanding JROTC teams who have not been any strangers, you've seen them many times before, to Points of Pride celebrations for all of their accomplishments. Both of the JROTC teams tonight that we are celebrating have had a busy last few weeks with competitions across the nation. Tonight, we will recognize their accolades at the JROTC Rocky Mountain Drill Competition and the Army and All Service National Drill Competition. So first, if I could have the Montgomery Central High School cadets and their instructor, Command Sergeant Major Manning, to please come forward. Cadets on this team include Jubilee Ashford, Ray Black, Daniel Buddy, Gracie Carmen, Grayden Cochran, Serenity Devian, Sean Devian, Abigail Epps, Shelby Epps, Gavin Fiddler, Ella Galassi, Kyle Heath, Leila Jones, Lilly Nutson, Anderson Lowe, Jessica Mooney, Lilian Pilson, Grant Polling, Kenneth Reese, Samari Robinson, Kamara Smith, Myla Smith, Ivy Tubbs, Carson Waynick, and Lucas Worrell. At the Rocky Mountain Drill Competitions, they placed sixth as overall winners of the Rocky Mountain Drill Competition; fifth as overall winners in the Armed Team Competition; second in unarmed inspection team; third in unarmed color guard team; fifth in armed color guard team. And at the Army All Service National Drill Competition, they placed first in unarmed color guard; second in armed color guard; second in unarmed inspection; and fourth in armed inspection. Congratulations, cadets. And next, if I could have the West Creek High School cadets and their instructors, First Sergeant Luckett and Sergeant First Class Slate, to please come forward. Cadets from this team include Darcy Aguilar, Giselle Argueta, Rachel Arnett, Gabriella Barzola, Abigail Card, Alaris Claiborne, Eviana Copeland, Ashlyn Cuevas Martinez, Ayana Dixon, Shehrazad Holt, Braden Jackson, Serenity Johnson, Tilia Jones, Jermaine Lacy, Brianna Mierke, Deja McQueen, Yakilin Mejia Bahuna, Tupajane Med, Joseph Newton, Gilali Norman, Ariana Oganizov, Jesse Ortiz, Chloe Robinson, Jason Rock, Cas Ruiz, Teagan Schneider, Haley Ryan, Alex Serrano, Angel Shade, Lamont Stalls, Starla Tavoras, Selena Turk, and Andrew Webster. At the Rocky Mountain Drill Competition, this team swept the competition, earning overall winners of the Rocky Mountain Drill Competition; winners of the Sergeant's Major of the Army Cup; winners of the Fifth Brigade Norwich Cup; first-place overall unarmed champions; first-place overall commander's trophy; first-place unarmed duo exhibition team; first-place unarmed inspection team; first-place 5280 Separate Best Color Guard. Lot of first place. And at the, yes. And at the Army and All Service National Drill Competition, the team placed second in unarmed exhibition duo; fourth in unarmed exhibition duo; fifth in unarmed color guard; and third in unarmed exhibition. And I might need just a little reminder, this is the second year in a row that you've swept the Rocky Mountain Competition. So congratulations, West Creek. This concludes this evening's Points of Pride.
Our next item on the agenda is public conversation. We did not have anyone sign up for that tonight. Then our next item on the agenda will be approval of consent agenda. I have a motion from Mr. Garland and a second from Mrs. Pace to approve on a consent agenda. Discussion is closed. Please open the vote. Are all members satisfied with their vote? Please close the vote. Motion passes 7-0. Next item is policy monitoring. Dr. Vedder.
Board, please find in your board packet information on Executive Limitation 5: Financial Administration. This executive limitation has 12 compliance expectations to ensure the director of schools shall not cause nor allow fiscal jeopardy or a material deviation from the annual budget or budget policy adopted by the board. All revenues are scheduled to be spent in accordance with the approved budget. No funds have been borrowed to date for the current fiscal year without approval, nor have funds been expended from the fund balance without authorization. The actual ending fund balance will always be greater than 3% based on current levels of revenue and expenditures. Payrolls are processed per the published calendar, and all other obligations are paid in a timely manner. Purchases are made consistent with the state and district procurement codes. Sufficient internal controls are in place as documented in annual financial audits. In addition, all board accounts are audited annually by the State Comptroller's Office. Likewise, individual school accounts are audited per a contract with a certified public accountants, and receivables are pursued as appropriate. Updates regarding revenue collections, rising costs, and capital projects are provided to the board through working sessions. To conclude, any proposed changes to the budget are approved by the board and county commission, and quarterly financial reports are provided to both the board and county commission. Chairman Griffey, this concludes Executive Limitation 5: Financial Administration.
Thank you, Dr. Vedder. Do I have a motion to accept Executive Limitation 5 report? I have a motion from Mr. Nelson. I have a second from Ms. Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Discussion is now closed. Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Close the vote. Passes 7-0. Career Technical Education Program, Dr. Vedder.
Please find in your board packet information on Executive Limitation 13: Career Technical Education Program. This executive limitation has three compliance expectations to ensure the director of schools shall not fail to develop high-quality high-school- high-school career technical education programs. Specifically, CMCSS has reviewed local, regional, state, and national job markets to determine if our current programs are meeting the needs of students and preparing them for current and future jobs. The Fourth Annual Senior Hiring Expo was held on May 15th. Forty local businesses and industry partners with at least five entry-level positions, as well as representatives from multiple branches of the military, participated. Human resource personnel from each participating business shared company and available position overviews, salary and benefit information, as well as application and hiring protocols. You will notice in your packet the program expansions, dual credit and enrollment opportunities, and industry certifications. The CMCSS instruction team has collaborated with other agencies and funding resources to allocate funds to support effective CTE programs. Finally, we will continue to evaluate our five-year plan. This will include a review of current course offerings, student enrollment, and current future job market trends. Chairman Griffey, this concludes Executive Limitation 13.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept EL 13? I have a motion from Mr. Patterson. A second from Mrs. Pace. Any discussion? Hearing none. Discussion is now closed. Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with their vote? Please close the vote. It passes 7-0. Reports. How school academic supports for students?
Yes, I would like to welcome Dr. Kimmy Saharsky. She is our Director of Accountability, and she's going to be discussing with us some of the academic supports occurring for high school students this year.
I will gladly do that while my slides move. Thank you. Not that that makes it any better at driving, but let's give this one a go. I'm going to be sharing about the academic supports that we provide in the high school programs to give you an idea of how we're helping our children prepare to be college and career-ready as they exit the school district. And so you have three levels of them. We have during the regular scheduled day, the kind of events that go on, and before-after, and summer opportunities and non-traditional. This is not all-inclusive, okay? So during the regular day, we have the things like support interventions and RTI, inclusion, AB courses that we do with the SPED students, IDS, which is the credit and grade recovery that the students work in. Before and after, in summer programs, we also have academic and non-academic kind of programs going on. Again, grade and credit recovery continue. We have the transition from middle school to high school, which is one of the hardest transitions you make. Summer school, and then we have the academies that we offer in the center. We also have the non-traditional of the adult high school and early technical colleges at TCAT. So here's a preview of what it looks like for the regular scheduled day. We have things like the English Language Arts, very focused on literacy and math interventions; the AB academic courses, that's to give that extra support as you navigate things like Algebra I and Biology. We do inclusion. That's where the special education teacher and the regular education teacher team teach. We have AVID, which is a great program for those that are especially first-generation going toward college; the RTI, the ACT prep, and digital citizenship. We also provide in-the-day credit recovery and grade recovery, and this is to help our students get back on track. This is a high-mobility district. Kids come from all over the world, and they arrive where they may have part of a course that may not be offered in the state of Tennessee. We help them work on completing it. Also, sometimes children have events that occur that they don't pass a credit, and we help them work toward that. Grade recovery is the program where if on the first semester, the first nine weeks, and the third nine weeks, I did not do well in my class, but we don't want the student to give up. So we provide them the opportunity in the second nine weeks and the fourth nine weeks. If you continue to improve and you do well and pass that, we work on building the first. So you save your credit rather than stopping and trying to perform. Additional supports that we have that run in our schools, we have school counselors, the Military Family Life Counselors. We work with Centerstone. We have Care Solus, which was new this year. We have a partnership with Youth Villages. We have student success coaches. We have social workers in the schools. We have family and transition liaisons. And we have students with disability transitioned to work, a very successful program. Before-after, and summer supports. One of the, a lot of the things that we do in before and after school and summer are supported through grants. One of the largest we have is Army Youth Programs in Your Neighborhood. This runs in the middle and high schools is where we have those programs. We do everything from remediation, intervention, acceleration, and we also target interests. We have a large STEM component to that, including programs like Cyber Patriot, et cetera. We also have ESER, which is finishing this summer, as you know. And it's been providing before-after and summer programs at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And a lot of it was around academic support to help our children build those literacy skills that are critical to success throughout school. We also have credit and grade recovery in the after-school, before, and summer programs as well. And then we have students that are not on track to graduate with their peers. We try to look at how can we support them to get them back on track. This is just an overview of what the data looks like for credit recovery in after-school, before, and summer programs. We run it during the regular day. That data is part of the regular traditional credits. But this is what it looks like in after-school. We'll be finishing up the data for 23-24 in July. But we average about 2,400 kids average participate in the program. They may take one to three credits, and about nine- in the program. They may take one to three credits, and about 91% of them complete and earn the credit that they're working for. After-school academic, we have tutoring. Homework help is highly requested by families. Advanced placement support, open libraries. We do all kinds of boot camps for ACT, AP, those kinds of things, and TCAT and the course boot camps as well for the high schools. High schools have additional programs such as robotics. We have robotic teams in the after-school program who've gone to the Worlds and have done extremely well. Our Solar Sprint Team's just won as well. We have Cyber Patriot. We have Academic Bowl, Science Olympiad, the JROTC Extended Day, and I think you saw the fruits of that work just a moment ago. We have all types of fitness programs, clubs and things that are aligned to students' interests, everything from the culinary arts to drawing and anime. We do also art, music, and theater. As an average daily attendance, this is actually, we track this in an attendance portal. In these programs, we average between 3,000 and 3,200 every day, and of those participants, 980 were identified as military-connected. Since Apen funds a large part of this, it is important that we also track the youth that are military-connected because that is the purpose of Apen is to serve the Army Youth in the neighborhoods. Summer programs in summer 23, 24, we have the traditional brick and mortar, and then we transition, we run transition programs from middle school to high school. In 22, 23, the supports were offered to, and this is high school, 1,300 students in ninth through 12. They were in credit recovery, high school 101. 1,100 returned to be on track for graduation with 2,132 credits earned, and we had approximately 200 to 300 that entered high school ready to start high school with an understanding of how it operates. Non-traditional supports. And we have a large piece of this. We have the College and Career Academies that run in each of our schools. They're like schools within schools. You're quite familiar with them, and they're attached to the interest and the job markets in our areas to provide our students a greater opportunity for success. We have the Early Technical College at TCAT, again aligned to the job market and the high interest of students. These students work on both high school and college curriculum, and this program is designed for 11th and 12th grade students. We have an adult high school program. This differs from the adult education, which is your HICAT. This is, the students earn a regular Tennessee education diploma. This year, they served 297 students, 151 graduates, 82, 80, early graduates, 29 juniors. They graduated 86.9 of their fourth-year students. The importance of running a program like this is not all traditional schools fit all students, but in Montgomery County, the adult high school made a difference in our graduation rate, moving the district from an 88% to 92.3 at that point. That makes the program a very valuable piece. Since they opened the adult high school in 2020, 2020 and 21, we've had 690, 689 graduates, so almost 700 students. And remember, they can be all the way up to the age 99, have gone back to school and earned a regular high school diploma at this point in their lives. We even had last year, a mother-daughter set that graduated from there as well. Questions?
Ms. Pace.
That's certainly an impressive array of programs that CMCSS is offering. What type of transportation do you provide in the summer programs?
So, so we do have some transportation. It hasn't been as much in the last couple of years because of bus drivers, right? We need bus drivers to drive the buses, but because they're held right after school, the children stay right after school with their programs, so we don't have to worry about getting them there. And then we work on helping the families to get the children home. Our goal is that we have all the bus drivers that Montgomery County needs so that we provide it, but we did until we ran on to the bus driver shortage.
Thank you.
Great question.
Mr. Baker.
I was just curious. I noticed with the credit recovery data, it went from like 900 students to over 2,000 in a couple of years there. Was that because more kids decided to engage in the program to have credit recovery, or we, more students needed credit recovery in that time?
That is a great question. I believe you're the first person to ever ask it. So initially, when the program first started, they were targeting 11th and 12th graders, right? These are the kids that are off-target, that it's critical to graduating. And then the next year, they added the 10th grade, right? Because we are a high-mobility district, and people are always moving in and out of the district. And then the final year after that, we added 9th grade. So the, the big jumps you see now starting to level off was because we were adding the different grade levels to make it successful. When, we discovered that when children were in the 9th grade, they were immortal and didn't realize the importance of at the end of 9th grade, you'd like to have credits, right? So we went ahead and focused on the ones at the end. Now, everybody values, let's get finished with high school and move on to what our next journey's going to be.
All right. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nelson.
Just one quick question. How are students, how do they enter the program? Are they targeted or are they so voluntary?
Open programs. So anybody can participate in programs, but if we see a child that needs to be in these programs, we do a very focused outreach to make sure we invite them in. High-interest programs are open and children can come. Apen has a rule that they don't support programs that are not open or programs that are like competitive, like to be on a football team. Apen wouldn't do football because they exclude students. You have to compete to be on the team, et cetera, et cetera, kind of thing. So that's one of the openings of the Apen program. But we have open programs. We try to recruit the kids to get in there on both sides.
Okay. Thank you. One last question. ESER program is ending because of funding created to fill the gap for loss of learning during COVID. Has that gap been filled?
We are closing the gap. So it will still, we need to continue. It's not something you stop. You should never stop in education. And in a community that suffers from high mobility, well, not suffer, that we enjoy, high mobility, we always want to be focused on moving our kids forward. So we will continue that work. We do also have money for before, after, and summer. This included in the GP fund as well to make sure we do that. And we're highly competitive about grants. We continue to compete for grants, and we look for those opportunities, even for the small programs like the Solar Sprint that works on literacy, math, and science. We went after these kinds of things to ensure the opportunities.
You just said it was, was ending when you went through the report, not, but the program itself is not ending. The ESER funding is ending is what you meant by that. When you went through the report, the ESER part, you said it was ending. You were speaking to the funding.
Oh, the funding. So the reporting, that's a great question. ESER, any grant, which a lot of people don't realize, is when a grant ends, you're still held accountable to the work you identified in the grant, and they'll identify how many years afterwards. ESER has an additional five years of data that we will be working with after ESER ends. It's the same thing with Race to the Top. You were here when we did the Race to the Top work. We finished it, but for the next three years, we maintained that science work that was in the Race to the Top grant. So that's all grants that you do. They want to know that you continue to sustain what you asked about, the models that you built, the strategies that you implemented, the interventions that you agreed to. They want to know that you worked hard to sustain them, and so you're correct.
Thank you. Appreciate your report.
Yes, sir.
Next item. Comments before County School Liaison Officer? CMCA representative? Go Eagles.
Good evening. I stood here last month and talked about how a student, a teacher, a school, and a district are more than the label that they receive as a result of state testing. I think it is very important to remember that since we recently received news that most students will not be held accountable for their state testing results again this year. I say most students because some results will impact third graders and their families. Third-grade teachers who are ending out the year with field days and activities are now racing to get students retested before the end of the school year, which is Thursday. That is a lot of stress on our educators and young students. I spent this year telling my students, as I do every single year, that the state test will count. While students told me that it never counts, and to tell you the truth, I can't remember the last time that it counted for students. I can remember the last time it counted for teachers, schools, and this district because it was last year and every year before that. How is it possible that everyone else is held accountable, accountable for TCAT except the producer of the test, which is the state, and the individuals who actually take the test, the students? The state needs to hold itself accountable for being able to produce scores in a timely manner before using those scores to negatively, negatively impact third graders, educators, schools, and districts. CMCSS should not make decisions that impact educators based solely off of state testing data that is not reliable due to its lack of accountability. It is disheartening to see the amount of credibility that is placed on the data when it is publicly released, when those who actually produced that data, the students, were never held accountable for it. It is also disheartening to see anyone support giving public money to private entities based solely off of this flawed state testing data. On a positive note, I want to thank the board and Dr. Luna Vedder for making the decision not to arm our educators. We have enough responsibilities as it is without adding the dangerous burden of carrying a firearm. There are too many risks with carrying a firearm in schools that outweigh any positive scenarios. Thank you for realizing that not all issues in this school are to be placed at the feet of educators because others do not want to effectively deal with them. And I also just want to say, I hung up my combat boots 20 years ago, and I want to leave them there. Thank you.
PET representative.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Luna Vedder. Just want to just make a phrase of, there's no tired in May like teacher tired. And those of you who have been educators, have taught in the classroom, you know exactly what we're talking about. I've seen students skip, walk, jump, turn somersaults down the hallway this week that I have never seen move faster than a sloth all year long. So you can tell that we're getting close to the end. So I'd like to congratulate Anthony because I went through the list as he was reading those, pronouncing those names. I'm thinking, hmm, some of these are not phonetically appropriate, so I don't know how he did it, but I congratulate him on that. And just one important thing is, I want to give you some homeworks this summer. Whenever I hear someone complaining about teachers or the education system, I ask them, so when are you going to start subbing? Or when are you going to go back and get your degree and teach? Because you do not understand the experience and what happens in the classroom until you get in our shoes and you teach with us. So I think our teacher residents are finding that out. They're getting great experience because they're seeing things that they will never see in a textbook. They'll never see in a college/university class. So those teacher residents, I think they're getting a great experience. So walking in our shoes, that's your homework. Get those people who are complaining about teachers to say, come on, walk in our shoes. Fill out your substitute application. And also, I want to celebrate the successes of the year. I know some of, many of our families in the district braved the tornado and the damage and what happened after that, but also I want to honor the fallen on Memorial Day, not to forget that, and also just celebrate the successes of the year. At the end of the year, you have to look back in August and think, ooh, wow, those students that we thought, I'm not sure I'll ever be able to move them where they need to go. But then at the end of the year, you think, wow, look at the successes that we can celebrate. So have a good summer.
Thank you. Comments by County Commissioners? I will defend the mayor at a conference. I'm sure they would have been here if possible. Next item, board, comments for board members. Ms. Pace.
I just, I have a question. Recently, a national network, News Network, addressed post-pandemic learning loss and the massive budget cuts necessitated by the upcoming September 30th expiration of the, I think it's $190 billion in emergency aid, which was extended to schools and provided by Congress. And these temporary funds were provided, of course, to, in three rounds, of federal funding to offset the harm that the pandemic did to education. More resources and programs were provided with additional staff was hired. And now without the funds that will be ending to maintain the programs, massive teacher layoffs are expected. This program interviewed a panel of three Oregon school superintendents, which included one of our CMCSS former director of schools, Sandy Husk, who's now serving as interim superintendent of Portland Schools, Public Schools. And incidentally, four of our school board members, this school board member worked directly with Dr. Husk 20 years ago. As is predicted, the Tennessee schools will not suffer as much, as extensively as the Oregon schools, but of course, they're still going to be harmed, the teacher, with the teacher layoff. My question is, well, this is expected reduction of teaching positions and this widespread teacher layoff. Will it significantly affect the Montgomery County teacher shortage?
That's a great question. So we have been meeting at least monthly for the past two years to talk about what does this look like when the ESER dollars go away. So we've been very strategic with every decision when it comes to funding. So as a position opens up naturally, we talk about, is this a needed position? Is this one that will go away with ESER? Any positions that were going away with ESER were clearly marked when they were posted, that it is an ESER-only position. We have, the team has done a fantastic job about being very diligent about what are the positions we still need to maintain. And over the last two years, we have been working those into the GP budget as we needed them. And so we are not expecting any sort of teacher layoffs in this county. We have been very strategic about what that looks like. It is also, it was a great opportunity to try some things. So for instance, permanent substitutes, that ESER allowed us to put teachers in buildings who are there on a full-time basis and substitute in classrooms as openings come up. And we have found the need to sustain that and maintain that. And it's actually basically fiscally neutral by the time we, we look at what we pay for substitutes. So we are not anticipating any issues in this county.
Do you think it will help the teacher shortage that we have in the, in the system?
Yeah, I almost feel like I need to knock on wood because I don't want to jinx anything. But heading into this year, when we look at where we are right now compared to where we were last year or even the year prior, we are a community that continues to grow. So we are going to continue. We are building a new school. We need new teachers, but we seem to, and again, I don't want to jinx anything, but be in a better position that, than we were in the past. Part of that, I think, is, is the board passing, continuing to pass some, some pay raises. It's a lot of focus on the culture with our upbeat data and making sure that we're listening and responding as we identify issues. But right now, we still have gaps. There are specific instances, especially when you're talking about special education and some of those trends, that we desperately need teachers.
Math and science.
Math, science. But we are in a better place than we have been in the past.
I kind of thought we would be two steps ahead of the crowd. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. And as we approach this Memorial Day, I just want to give a thanks to those families and the Gold Star families and to all of and the Gold Star families and to all our veterans because all gave some, but some gave all. And as we go forward, we need to just reflect that our freedoms that we experience here in America, despite your political position, that they're all due to our veterans and people making sacrifices for us. So just as we go in there. Happy Memorial Day.
Mr. Garland.
Yeah, I would just like to thank the staff and then get a chance to thank the teachers for another great year. We're about to enter a time in the year that I really do enjoy, that's the graduation. Believe it or not, standing up on that stage, shaking those students' hands as they walk across is the, have been the highlight of my career as a school board member. And it couldn't be done without you in the, in the classroom and the students' willingness to sit there and learn. And so I just want to take this time and say to the teachers, great jobs. To the staff, great job. To Dr. Luna, great job. Keep it up. Thank you.
Director of Schools report.
I'm pretty sure Mr. Garland read my notes, but good evening, Board members. Tomorrow does last, mark the last half-day for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Thank you to all the administrators, faculty, staff member who have made this an amazing year. I hope everyone takes time off to rest and rejuvenate. Tomorrow also kicks off the CMCSS graduation ceremonies that will, will be held Wednesday through Saturday at Austin Peay State University. None of this is possible without our educators in the classroom. I'm looking forward to congratulating our twenty-five-hundred seniors who will be twenty-two forty graduates. Mr. Griffey, this concludes my reports for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Vetter. And that concludes our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.